Everyone, welcome to what is hopefully our final budget deliberation of FY for FY 25 budget. It's July 22, 2024. It's 2:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Matarri Duncan and Commissioner Brooks is joining us by telephone. Are there changes to the agenda? Okay, none. Public comment? None. Item, we'll handle item two first, which is the judgment levy, and it is an action item. And I will start with our finance director.
Randy Falcone for the record. So, a couple of weeks ago, our tax accountant had presented to the board the, kind of the details of, there's a couple lawsuits the state settled, and so we lose out on property tax that we were going to levy. So, we have the option for next year to levy and recapture those amounts. So, we just need direction from the board, since my office, it will be filling, it's actually just started the process of filling out our L2.
Okay. So, just so I can put this in different words, we set our budget, and then we have our levy rate, and then everybody gets their proportionate share based on their value. We, the courts changed the value on the operating property, therefore, the distribution was not correct. So, we now have to redistribute that money that we budgeted for. Is that?
Correct.
Okay, great. Then...
Alicia Lynch, tax accountant, for the record. Yes, that's essentially it. It's back taxes, so this is for prior years, and we've already spent that money, so we would be having to take from '23 to back pay. This would be us taking a levy to pay back '23, which was billed correctly, it's just took a hit that it wasn't supposed to.
Right. Okay. I don't see an issue with that. Bruce?
No, that's fine. That's fine.
All right. Bill?
What's the total amount of money we're talking about?
It's $86,625.75, and you have the option to do the whole thing, or to do half this year and half next year.
I think...
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think the whole thing this year is fine, and I think it was still 20 cents per 100,000 in value.
Yep.
So, okay.
So, I move that we approve the judgment levy with the auditor's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Sheriff Duncan?
Aye. All right. Item one, final budget deliberations. Ms. Falcone?
Yes, so Commissioners, I'm at the point where I'm just, I'm ready to balance the budget. I just need a board decision on COLA, and if they want to do the extra step for the sheriff's professional staff, or if there were any other cuts the board wanted to make to the budget.
All right. Bill?
Okay. I, I, when I see these kind of budget items last, in my mind, they should be first. We need to, if we don't have the people, then things don't work right. And we've seen that in spades when it comes to the sheriff's office and planning and zoning. And when we pay appropriately, we end up with enough people applying, staying, and, you know, retaining people. And I don't think anybody can question whether the average worker, and I'm talking about people who work at the county, have taken some pretty ferocious hits this year. Just because the government doesn't count food, doesn't count gasoline in their CPI, doesn't mean our employees don't have to pay it. And, you know, we are, we, my wife and I are not hurting, but I know others, people who are in the, making forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollar range, who have four children, who are hurting very much. And I think we should do a maximum COLA, and my recommendation is 4%.
Okay. And our CPI does include fuel and food, just so you're aware. The one that was...
Oh, well, what CPI are you talking about?
I think we're doing CPIW? CPIU?
Okay. Okay. I know some of these, some of the things you hear do not include those items, and it's just, it's just crazy. Everything's gone up, and they've gone up a lot more than we can afford to pay. I mean, if we really sat down and put a pencil to it, our COLA would be around 10%. And I'm sorry, we can't afford that. We cannot afford that. But to sit there and say, "Let's take it from the employees," is absolutely the wrong way to do business. We should first figure out, you know, personnel costs, and then go on there into the rest of the budget, because without the people, nothing else works. So, it's just very important we do this correctly.
Okay. Bruce?
Well, I certainly understand what Commissioner Brooks is saying. I think the challenge, of course, is not only, you know, what we can try to do for the people who work in the county, but also the residents in the county, because not everyone gets to have a discussion with their employer about a COLA. A lot of times, it's just to, it's just they get to keep their job. And that's often how it works in the private sector when things are tight. So, I would be open to a COLA, but not more than two and a half percent this year. I think getting people to where they're supposed to be is something that we should be working on each year, but I think these big moves could end up, you know, creating issues into the future. And so, I just want to take these steps and at least keep pace to a degree with what's going on. The other thing, too, is that we're not putting any money away for capital. There's zero dollars in this budget for capital, and that is something that we have to do. I mean, we can, we can play the short-term game and not put the money aside, but, you know, for long-term capital planning, we don't do that. It just kind of happens through salary savings and what we discover that comes back to us from the previous fiscal year. I do believe that we should pull the autopsy lab, and we should reduce the interest expense correspondingly. And the main reason for that is that if we put this in the budget, we are going to disqualify ourselves from any grants. And I don't want us to be disqualified from any prospective grants. We can always add this in. If we reduce the interest income that we expect that might come in, you know, it's all based on a guesstimate, then the money will be there, and we can always mid-year add that project. I am for having an autopsy lab, but I'm not for having it for the sake of having it. I'm for having it if we can get MOUs with the surrounding counties that say, "We will work with you," that we will understand our overhead very well, because we're adding overhead. It's not just building a lab, it's adding people to this. And, and then finally, with the sheriff's office professional staff, I'm very much interested in filling the vacant positions and doing what we need to do to fill those positions. But I would like to take a little longer. I don't want to make an 11th-hour decision on the entire administrative staff or professional staff. I want to get people to where they're supposed to be so that we can fill these positions and not have to worry about recruiting to fill a position when somebody retires, or when somebody resigns, because we're not paying people well enough. There's going to be natural turnover no matter what, but we should at least not make it turnover, because the job isn't, people aren't getting paid for the job they're doing. So, I'm very open to getting the positions, the open ones, filled today, and then immediately having this conversation of what, what is it going to take to keep a steady flow of applicants for these positions, so that we don't have to play catch-up, that we're not losing people left and right, because we're getting too far behind the curve. So, that's kind of where my head is with it. The problem is that, you know, based upon our scenarios, if we're going to have zero cushion, we're looking at a one and a half percent tax increase, a zero cushion. That seems kind of foolish with all the mid-year changes and the fact that there's zero capital. So, the question is, you know, where between one and a half and, and 3%, you know, is this board going to land? To ensure that there is enough cushion for mid-year asks, and to legitimately investigate what it's going to take to get the staffing to where it should be, and if we can do that mid-year, or are we going to have to wait until the following fiscal year? But I'm absolutely committed to doing that, and I think as long as we are all focusing with good intentions, we can get there.
Couple different things. And just reminding everybody, today, just two, the three of us need to agree to put something forward. We can always, you know, continue working on the budget and make cuts later, but that's kind of our goal, if we can get there today. The first thing I want to say is the jail pods are not in the budget, and they really should be. If we're going to be spending the money in FY 25, transparency, and I think even state budget law contemplates this, I think it needs to be in the budget. Now, it's a zero-sum game. We already have fund balance set aside, so pretty easy just to say, "Okay, it's in the budget, and here's the fund balance to cover it," and we're still operating on that scenario. So, that's not really an issue, but I'm, I'm pretty...
Is the, is the Justice Center expansion in our budget?
No, so that was a grant added...
No, the Justice Center expansion is not in the budget.
So, I'm not quite sure. I understand the relevance of it, if the big, the big 800-pound gorilla in the room isn't even on our budget.
My understanding is because it was a grant, we normally don't budget for...
We also have county dollars going towards it.
Yeah, we have, what?
Yeah, so...
Five to 10 million of county dollars?
So, we can budget that as well.
I'm not going to, because the auditor's office has made the accounting decision in accordance with state law for how we treat our capital carryforwards. So, I don't want to get in the weeds with how accounting works, but when you do a mid-year capital project like that, we roll forward the funds as laid out in statute year to year until the project is finished. The capital projects we include in the adopted budget are brand-new projects. So, if you make, if we were to make that change to these two projects, we're literally changing every single capital project county-wide, and that is a tremendous amount of work.
So, then will our adopted, I mean, our amended 24 budget include the 9 million in jail, in jail?
Yes. Well, not 9 million, because the board has only approved 578,000 right now. So, technically, only 578,000 is actually budgeted. So, once you approve a final price with the contractor, then we'll pull down the money based on that final price. So, we pull down money as you sign contracts. So, the only contract that's been signed is Phase One for 578,000. So, if you approve the final GMP for that project before the end of FY 24, yes, the FY 24 amended and the 25 amended will show everything you've approved, like up to the 9 million, whatever it ends up being.
Okay. As long as you're comfortable that that's way, it just seems very...
It's just how the office has done it for years and years and years. It's clean accounting-wise, it's what all the clerks have preferred, all the finance directors. I mean, it's not a decision I made, it's a decision that's been in place for a long time.
Okay, as long as the amended budget reflects that?
It does. It does. And that's a resolution the board approves every year when it's done.
It's a capital carryforward?
Yep.
Right, but it's not the amended?
Well, the capital carryforward is a budget amendment. So, it's one big amendment that you approve the resolution, and then the amounts in the amendment you approve, that is a budget amendment we make to the year.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that is what we're doing.
Yeah.
All right. The other thing is, I'm concerned with the last-minute addition of the additional steps when the Board of County Commissioners said no steps to all, to all elected officials. And so, that one, I didn't really get a good justification for, because I didn't see all the turnover rate in all those specific positions, which wouldn't be an additional step to each person. It would be more of a holistic change on our matrix plan. We are doing a wage study, so therefore, we will understand next spring, I would hope, where all these positions fit. And it's going to cause disparate impact. We have other law enforcement departments in the county that are not getting this additional step, and, yeah, it just diminishes the validity of our comp plan. So, I wouldn't be in support of that for right now. Let's see, with that, the problem with capital, if we would have budgeted for capital in '23, we had a $9 million return, so that would have been even more taxation to the residents when we had this 9 million in return. That is not going to happen, that was an anomaly year, I get that, but without a capital improvement plan to show the citizens why their taxes are being raised, because we have to do this project, this project, this project, then I can't be in support of bringing, you know, additional taxation just for saying, "Well, we have, we need capital projects," when we have millions and millions right now in our fund balance.
Well, that would be fine, but what I don't understand is why this, why previous boards have never bothered to put together this capital improvement plan. It's always been a hope and a prayer, what happens from the previous year, which is just bad budgeting. It's bad. And, you know, the, the other problem is that we, we've used salary savings for positions that never get filled. It's just, it's lazy accounting. And, so, yeah, some years, you get these windfalls, and it makes me wonder, why is there a windfall when people don't really understand why? You know? And so, yes, I agree with you, there should be a capital improvement plan, but, you know, I'm the new one on the board, I'm the junior one, and I'm the one who's advocating for capital saving. This hasn't been brought up before.
Right. And part of the reason is, there's a philosophy that government needs to be reactionary. There is a part of planning that can happen, but if you are not reactionary, then chances are you are taxing people who will not get to use that, whatever the result of that taxation is. And then if that never ends up coming to fruition, you have overtaxed the citizens without a specific plan to put that in, in process. And we do have an opportunity, it's called a bond, where if the ARPA funds had never existed, we would have gone out for bond. And if we, if that was disapproved, then we would have gone for judicial confirmation. So, there are manners in state law that allow those things to happen.
Well, and, you know, that's a good point, but don't you think we should allow the citizens to make that decision? Don't you think we should at least present to them, this is how much should be put away every year, as opposed to us just making these decisions? And quite frankly, reactionary planning is always much more costly. It just is. You know, "Oh, we need it, we have to do it yesterday." You always pay for the rush service, you always pay because you need it at this point in time.
Well, we do have a five-year plan, so it's supposed to account for many of those different maintenance items and keeping up on stuff. So, it's just a philosophy difference. I just don't want to tax people without telling them, "This is exactly where it's going." And so, if you can sell that to the public, and the public says, "Yes, please raise my taxes 3% so we can have that cushion, or that, that amount of money to go towards a capital plan that hasn't even been, you know, put together yet," then that's fine.
Well, that's the point of putting one together. And frankly, we should have that discussion, and we can have that next Tuesday at the Commissioner Town Hall, because that's one of the things, is that my experience is that when you show people exactly where their money is going, they tend to be much more receptive to that, as opposed to just saying, "We're taxing you, and we can't explain to you where that money is going," because then they think we're being wasteful and abusive with their money. And I would feel the same way. But the more that we explain to people, "This is where that money is going," yea or nay, do you not want that to happen? Listen, if the people in this community do not want capital planning, they do not want us to put money away for future capital expansion, they don't want us to pay people so we can fill the positions, then that's what they want, and it's my job to implement the will of the people. But we don't even give them that opportunity, and that's the part that I find to be a little silly.
The issue is whoever shows up is the one who's going to give you their opinion, which is great, except it doesn't count for the majority of the people who don't show up. So, we don't technically get a large representation of what...
Well, and that's the difference, because I don't wait for people to show up. I go out and I speak to people, I go out and I find them, I ask them all the time, "What do you think about this stuff?"
And you know what happens when I ask the people that? "Do not raise my taxes." Over and over and over again, they don't want to hear about capital planning, they don't want to hear about their taxes going up. So, I'm glad that you're having different conversations. The conversations I'm having are, "Do not raise my taxes."
Well, I would love to meet those people, so they can at least see what's going on. And then when they understand that our 911 dispatch, when our dispatch center got down so low, then they would go, "We'll pay for it. We'll pay for it." Because the alternative was a contract for 200,000 a year, it was 180,000, but that was the alternative for reactionary government.
But it wasn't reactionary, because I can show you over and over and over again how we raised the rates in 911, so there's...
But it didn't fix the problem. I mean, that's the thing, is that, you know, half-measures are not measures, they're just half-measures.
Yeah.
And now, now we don't accept applications anymore, because we've gotten so many...
So, you have, you've got Bill Brooks, you've got Bill Brooks, so convince him that we need a 3% tax raise, or whatever percentage that you're looking at.
Well, I'm not trying to convince anything, but...
Okay. This is, this is Phil Brooks. I have a different conversation with people, because nobody wants their taxes raised, but I say, "If we don't raise them, these things may not be available. Which of these things do you not want?" And they want them all. And quite frankly, our taxes in Cootney County are some of the lowest around. So, I have no problem looking people in the face and saying, "We're raising the taxes 3%, especially with our growth, the growth we're having." It's just crazy.
Well, that's another problem, is that the growth doesn't pay for itself here, that the people who live here actually have to pay for that growth through their taxes, because that, in essence, is the single biggest driver in government growth in this county, is the growth of the population. And so, when we have that, you know, the, these massive growth spurts that go on here, that is what drives the expansion of government. It's not because I want to, I don't believe either of you want to grow government, but when you grow the population here, that is the, the result of it.
That's right. I mean, you have to have another person presumably at the counter in DMV, when you add X number of people to the county who want to, who want to be serviced. I also agree with Bruce on the, the lab, I just think that's something we can't afford this year, and should be taken out.
All right. Since two out of three commissioners want to cut the coroner's lab, I'm going to do that.
And the corresponding revenue?
Yes, and the corresponding...
And interest.
Okay.
So, it's...
Yes.
It's net neutral?
Correct. And it sounded like Commissioner Matarri and Duncan agreed that they wanted to forego the extra step for the sheriff's professional staff? That's what I heard?
Today.
Today.
Not tomorrow, but today, because it's so last minute.
Okay.
I am open to having the positions that are open regraded, because they can't fill them.
Can, can I be heard on that?
Mm-hmm.
Bob Norris here. A vast majority of our current vacancies are, we put work restrictions and work conditions that other professional staff positions in the county don't have, such as, you're not allowed to leave the facility during break times, you're not allowed to go outside to have a break outside the facility. So, these are some of the things that they don't put in these work wage studies that this, this county does. I currently have 19 vacancies, a vast majority of those vacancies fit this criteria. Control room operators can't leave the facility for lunch, but I argue that other professional staff throughout this county can.
I thought we addressed those in this budget. Is that the ones that we moved, the whole?
The custody technicians, yes, I believe they're all being moved up.
Okay, so the custody techs, okay. So, it'd be great to have one of those, based on the list that I saw, it would be great to go line by line and say which ones can't leave, because I know your animal control officers obviously can leave the building, because that's, they work outside, so, yep, that would be good information to have.
Well, I, I know that I would like to find a way to address these issues, but my, this is what happens when you sit in this chair. You hear two different sides. It's rarely together, and, and so, I just want to get to what is right, what is fair, and what will address the needs so that these positions can be filled. And every time I have a conversation, it becomes more confusing, and I'd like to figure out if we just can put down all these different criteria and get these positions, and we can look at them and then say, "This is fair." Because I do believe that with the background checks, compared to positions that don't have a background check, the applicant pool will be smaller. It will be. And by default, you need to pay a little bit more, because you're dealing with a smaller applicant pool. The problem is that there's just too much of the, "Well, what about me, and what about me?" And quite frankly, the problems right now are at the sheriff's office, and that's what needs to be fixed. The other departments don't have those problems, and I've heard a variety of reasons why they don't, but I really would like to spend some time and dig into this and get this resolved, certainly before October 1. But I don't know if it should be in the budget at this point, but we can certainly have enough cushion for a mid-year change and address it.
Ms. Sosa-Berto, did you have something to add?
Yes, I'd just like to clarify, for the lab, are we cutting it completely, or are we pushing it to mid-year? Dr. Duke will be interested in, in those specifics and what that's going to look like.
Sounded like they cut it completely.
If it's in the budget, we're disqualified for the grants, which is why we...
That was my intention.
Yes. Sorry, Bill. And then, that's why we correspondingly reduce the interest income for the lab, so it's a net zero change.
I just need a decision on what percentage of COLA and percentage of tax increase, and if we need to, if you're unable to come to a decision, we can schedule another meeting for this week.
I would... Go ahead, Bill.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. As far as COLA is concerned, I believe 4% is, is minimal, but if we can settle this today, I'm willing to go to 3.5, but no lower.
Okay. If we do a three, a 3.5% COLA, we would have to take the 3% tax increase, and that would leave us with 289,000 left over. The board could dedicate that to capital or mid-year changes, whatever they wanted to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think a 2.5% COLA keeps us where we need to be with the wage study happening in the fall.
And is there a particular tax scenario that you're leaning towards?
I'm not saying that I will vote for a 1.5% tax increase, but I would be willing to get that, get the budget balanced with a 1.5%, and then move forward as we still continue to have conversations.
So, if we do a 2.5% COLA at a 1.5% tax increase, that leaves us with $57,000 left that the board could assign to something else.
So, now it's up to you and Bill.
Well, the two and a half percent COLA is fine. But if we can always lower it, then I say, "Go with three," and we can have that discussion and lower it, 3%.
Okay, so you're leaning, so.
Because we can always come down.
Okay. So, we have two out of three commissioners for a two and a half percent COLA, so that's what I'm going to go with. Um, and then I just, do you want to schedule, um, because when I publish the budget, I have to know a percentage increase for tax, I have to know that. So, for all three of you to come to an agreement on the percentage tax increase, do you want to try and do that today or schedule another meeting?
Bill, what percentage of tax increase would you, uh, like to see?
Three.
Okay, and Commissioner Matarri's right, we can publish high with three and the board can come down if they want to.
Yes, and I want to make it very clear, it, it's not that I want a 3%, but that gives us a little more flexibility between now and the final.
Correct.
Uh, budget.
It does, and it gives me the most flexibility in publishing the budget so that you basically have the greatest amount of options possible. Because once, uh, present the balanced budget on August 1st and you have to approve it as the preliminary budget for publication, and after that, we can only go down, we're no longer allowed to go up. So, um, two and a half percent COLA, and I will, for now, go with a 3% tax revenue number, and you can make further adjustments if you want to. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, then.
No.
Will the final cuts take place on, um, the night of the budget meeting or will it be able to cut before then?
You can make cuts right now that you can tell me about, you can tell me on August 1st, or you can tell me the night of the budget hearing.
Okay.
And I guess, does this, that seems like that sounds good to two out of three commissioners?
Are there cuts that you guys want to make right now, suggestions? I mean, we can try to reschedule something this week, too, Wednesday or Thursday.
That would be easier. Um, it's very difficult to do stuff on the fly.
I know, it would be easier, but I haven't had the, the time to have an in-person meeting with, um, someone else that I was looking at some details with, so.
Okay.
I think it'd be a lengthy conversation for today and it'd be easier to have that offline than, than right now.
Is this for additional cuts?
Just for additional understanding, to see if a cut can be made or not.
Do you want to have another meeting on Wednesday?
Not really, I wasn't going to come in the office there a day, but, I mean, we can have it, it's at four o'clock.
Yeah.
I'm, if the board wants to schedule another meeting, I'm more than willing to do that.
And there's no other day during this week that we could?
I, I don't know, I, I just was on my way downstairs and they said they wanted to have one Wednesday afternoon, so.
Because there's always Thursday, too, like at 1:00, because we have community development in the morning.
Okay, and then, um, I think my other meeting's at 3:00, so that might, 1:00 Thursday might work as long as the room is open.
Yeah.
Wednesday, that's for me, but I can do Thursday.
It seems like it would be prudent to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it.
Yeah.
And we could discuss some of these.
Can you pull up the calendar real quick? Or can you pull up the B O C C calendar?
You're going to ask me?
At the bottom, the three dots. Yeah, I can't see the room calendar, but, um, Thursday looks fine because it should. This is, I mean, we're invited to, do you have, uh, the, uh? Yeah, I'm, I'm worried, I'm just, I can't remember. I can see it, but I can't log in. Oh, here we are, the admissions.
We can do Wednesday.
Let me see if I can try to, to move that. Oh, that's my. Let me see if I can move that appointment, so I'm willing to get tentative Thursday at 1:00.
So, tentative 1:00 on Thursday.
Okay, I'll just wait for the Outlook invite from your staff. And then we can, if we need to, we can move that day.
Okay. Public comment. Hearing none. 2:35, meeting adjourned.